Welcome to our regular meeting of council in person and live stream electronically for Tuesday, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Opening of our meeting is the land acknowledgement. The council and staff of the township of Monahue acknowledge that this sacred land on which the township of Monahue is now located. And this meeting is being held is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Algonquin Anashavi Nation. I have a few upcoming events and important dates. An aggregate resource master plan open house at the county of Lannar on March twentieth from six P M until eight P M. We have a free Easter bingo on March thirty first at Rosedale Hall, seven P M start, cash bar, all ages are welcome. Drinking water wise webinar, well maintenance and safety is April nineteenth. And Easter breakfast on April twelfth at Rosedale Hall from nine A M to eleven thirty eight A M. I'll have a moment of silence now, please. So moved by councillor Abbas and seconded by councillor Johnson, that's the regular meeting of council agenda dated March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Be approved as amended this date to add item two E eight hundred four road zoning amendment, Michael Pierre. And move items eight D, E, F, H, K, L from information to action. All in favor? Carry. Move by councillor Craftry and seconded by deputy Reed Carroll, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated March fourth, two thousand and twenty five be approved as present. All in favor? Carry. Disclosure of interest now or any time during our meeting? If we have any business arising from minutes of our previous meeting? So we'll move on to our first delegation for community plan for safety and wellbeing advisory committee, Stephanie Gray, please.
Hey, everyone. As you know, I'm Stephanie Gray, I'm the coordinator for the community safety wellbeing plan and the Lannar County Situation Table. And thank you very much for having me tonight to provide the update on our plan for two thousand and twenty five to two thousand and twenty nine. I know we have a packed agenda, so I will try to go. Okay, so my background, as you know, these community plans for safety and wellbeing are mandated by the province to be completed by all municipalities. And they are to, the act stipulates what's to be included in terms of advisory committees, consultations and establishing risks as outcomes and measures. Our original plan was approved in two thousand and nineteen and actually Monahue Township was the first one to approve the original plan or first on my circuit at that time. And it was filed, but the story, the new update has to be filed by July first, two thousand and twenty five. And I just want to note that these plans are part of a community safety model that's been adopted by Lannar County and. My position is funded through our grants from the Ministry of the Secretary General that have enabled the coordination of the plan and the situation table and so on. And that's done on behalf of the whole county or each municipality. So just a little bit of information about the Community Safety Policing Act, this is the one that replaced the Police Services Act, which the other plan fell under originally, but now falls under this one. There's a couple of regulators, there's one regulation that has a couple of stipulations associated with this. And that is, once it's adopted, it has to be published within thirty days if it's adopted on the internet and you can publish it in any other form you wish as well. And there's another regulation that indicates it needs to be reviewed and updated if necessary every four years from its adoption. And the previous, any plan submitted before two thousand and twenty one need to be updated and submitted in two thousand and twenty five, which is what our plan falls under. This is just a quick overview of the sectors and members of the advisory committee. So we have membership that represents all the sectors that are stipulated under the app. We could have like tons more people on this because there's such a wealth of information and services in the county. But we do consult with subject matter experts and different agencies if there's a component of the plan that we want information from. For the local government, we have a representative from county council and from the town of Smith Falls. Who represent local government and we do have some new membership on the advisory committee. For this, this plan representing culture and diversity and climate environment as well. The approach and the methodology for the development of this plan really began with a review of the existing plan and progress updates that we've done since two thousand and twenty three. And it helped us to develop key themes. The previous plan had twelve priority risk areas. We've narrowed this into four themes with a number of pillars for each. We did community consultation through a community survey, which had three hundred and ninety-three respondents. An agency survey went to or was completed by thirty-seven agencies. We held a virtual partner day, which attracted twenty-three participants from a number of wide range of agencies. We held a council police services board and community. We've seen advisory committee focus session. We had nine attendees about that represented six municipalities and some really good feedback from that. And we've held focus groups with a successful aging advisory committee, the Lannar County Child and New Services Collaborative and Sexual Assault Domestic Violence Advisory Committee. And then, of course, there's tons of data and reports and things, so all of that was collected together. That brought us to the identification of the assets and gaps that we could see. And draft outcome statements, the goals, the measures, the outcomes. The advisory committee approved the draft plan on February tenth and now I'm bringing it to everybody. Just a look at our overall outcome statements, this represents where we hope to be with the community based on the actions of the plan in the future. So we're looking at the community being one of opportunity, equity for diverse populations. Basic needs is big, everyone having needs or having housing, a livable income and precious food. Where residents respect the legacy of stewardship by those people who lived here before us and we want to sustain that for seven generations. A community of collaboration, working together to prevent harm for our citizens. Looking at our robust range of health and social services being accessible in a wide range of formats in a timeframe that is reasonable to prevent crisis. And then healthy relationships that respecting welcome neighbors and where people are kept safe from violence in all its forms. This is an overview of all the themes and the pillars in the plan. So we, as I mentioned, narrowed it from those twelve risk areas to affordability and quality of life. Health, violence against persons and priority populations and diversity. And then there's within the pillars in each of those in areas, we have indications of the assets. Issues and gaps that were found, lots of data to support the information. And then we developed the goals and the measures and the strategy to work out how we would try to, to progress with, with that information. And some of the highlights from this process, the previous plan, of course, was, was a really important piece and that key starting point that I mentioned. It became very clear early on the importance of housing, food, security and income as a priority, which is why it's like front and center in the plan because we know that. Making improvements in those areas will help to mitigate risk in others such as health and mental health. Lannar County's really strong record of collaboration is a huge asset. We've really got some good stuff going on in the county. People have noticed and tried to, you know, duplicate some of the things that we're doing as well. So that's a big part. We also noticed through the, the data and information, a lot of risks emerging with children and youth. So there's a particular attention on some areas in there. And then it's really important to recognize that we do have a lot of assets in the community. We're not trying to reinvent anything. We're trying to acknowledge what's there and build on it. And I wish we could name like every cool thing that we have going on in the county in the plan, but it would be huge. So just really briefly on the theme areas and the goals, I just want, I'm not going to go through all the goals here, but just highlight a couple of things. One being the climate change and environment piece is new in this plan. It recognizes the action that's being taken at the municipal level and the county level on, on a lot of things. We hear loud and clear from people who participated in the survey that they want to be more involved in climate action. So more communication and more information on what they can do to make a difference. And the belonging and civic engagement piece is new as well, which looks at isolation and increasing social inclusion. Voluntarism and also has some information on how we hope to work more with local municipalities to enhance. Information around the community safety and wellbeing plan, possibly tie it in with some of your own strategies and, and plannings. With health, the, the two key parts of this were physical health and mental health and, and looking at. Increased diversion and recognizing the, the complexity of some of the mental health and addictions issues that are out there. We also recognize that there's only so much control we have at a local level on, you know, mental health matters. So looking at how we can enhance things and increase communication and, and information sharing on what services are available and. Advocate the same things. For violence against persons, just want to note here, the essay, the sexual assault domestic violence. And intimate partner violence and gender-based violence pillar is there. It was in the last plan as well. But it's good to acknowledge it here in some of the planning that we're doing because it ties in with the recommendations from the Renfrew Inquest. And supports a lot of local municipal work that's been done on. Reclaiming, I can be an epidemic and some of the actions that, that go from there, including looking at a zero genocide community in collaboration with some of our provincial partners. And here you can see some specific things related to hate motivated crime and children, elderly and others. And then the priority populations recognizes these different populations and some of the specific issues that they may encounter. With the overall goal in each of them, just to provide more support in the community where it's, where it's needed. And just another bit of overview on the pieces of the act that are relevant to the municipalities, they already touched on the publication piece. Section two fifty-three recognizes that. A municipality that adopts a plan needs to take actions that are identified for it to do and encourage others who are in the plan to, to take actions as well. Anything that we would like to see municipalities do will come back to councils for approval or endorsement. Typically, it's been things like advocacy or greater communication. This time, of course, we're looking at collaborating more with you in terms of those pieces of the plan so that we'll be able to work together on that. Section two forty, two fifty-four, there's no regulation for that yet. But we do monitor the progress of the plans through those progress updates. And we'll continue to do that. If a regulation comes along from the province, it says, hey, we need to see if you're actually doing the stuff. Then we will, we'll be to show them what we're doing. Two fifty-five is the review period and two fifty-six is again more providing more information about the preparation of the plan. There's no regulation yet, but I'll submit it on behalf of the municipalities as soon as they're, they're adopted. So key actions, of course, the big one is adoption by July twenty, sorry, twenty fifth, first, twenty twenty five for submission. As I mentioned, always would come back to you if there's any specific actions we're hoping helps us with, please. The implementation of the plan, there will be a plan, an implementation plan developed. That provides a little more information and, and steps related to the strategies. And we'll identify teams to work on that. The large part of the work of these plans really falls to the, the community partners and local agencies across the county. Because they're doing a lot of the type of work, you know, we're in mental health and health and. Violence and things to mitigate that work. And then we'll come back and revisit the whole thing in quarters. So we did provide the suggested motion if you're interested in looking at that. And subject to any questions you may have, that's to my presentation and I'll just say we do have questions, I'm very hard of hearing, so. We might have this lumpy, lumpy speak.
But just when it comes to the health or access to care enough, does the plan take into account the length of time it takes to get testing? You can just get into the hospitals in general? Is that part of the plan or is that?
That's something that we want to measure and, and see because it, it varies with so many different. Organizations like what's, what's being measured. So we do want to measure that and see. How, what lists look like and then try to better communicate what those wait lists are and what some of the expectations are and then possibly advocate to.
Okay, so we would be advocates for shortening up different times when you have the MRIs or anything like that?
Which, which often comes down to just asking for more funding to support them.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. You're welcome. So move by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Abbas, that council accepts the presentation by Stephanie Gray. Coordinator for the community plan for safety and wellbeing advisory committee as information, all in paper. Here, thank you. Oh, there we are. Okay, so. Twenty twenty-four, our, he was making a difference together, library partners to promote learning and literacy. There we go. It was a year of collaboration, even more than, than more so. We worked a lot with our community groups to offer more to the community, more services and resources and more opportunities. Overall libraries continue to increase, it's been sort of going up since we got over the pandemic. As it's increased, circulation dipped a bit, but program participation. And use of library space was up, as was the use of libraries, computers and internet, internet. And we worked with our community partners to offer more programs and more learning opportunities. Collaboration with our partners is important because it allows library to offer more to the community, but it also supports our partners in their initiatives and goals. And expands what's available to the public, enhancing community wellbeing. So it's win, win, win. Adding more wins every year. These are things that we do in projects that are in the library. There's the seed library. We also have Seed Saturday. At the Eco Litterable Centers, which are new, those for kids, we have a new collection of things about water, wetlands, that kind of thing. And there's some, some programs and stuff that's going on. It's a partnership with the Reader Roundtable and five area, six area libraries. And we continue to do the Afro Champions Contest that gets displayed in the library. That's in partnership with the community. Which is about species at risk in, in the area. And we started up a French language pool for adults of books. In partnership with the Northrendville Library. There we go. Yes, and of course, in the library, we also have meeting space, many community groups using their boards, picture their chamber of farmers. There's quite, quite a number of groups and we also offer virtual like student space that we can set up meetings for people to say if they like that as well. And these are some of our kids program, or no, these are actually some things that we do out of the library. These are our class, expanded our class visits to Miracle School, to Wanta New School with the French school, they were visiting the library, they were right close to us. The summer, we, or last summer, I guess, in two thousand and twenty-four, we partnered with Wanta New Township. And the summer student came and helped with our summer program and I can get a couple of programs at the kids' club. Did some painting, showed them my best magic tricks. Also the story trail, we need to work on that with the Trail Society. And this past year, we worked with the, the school, they, they, a couple of school classes wrote. French stories and they find musical stories and they put them up on the, on the story trails. That was fun. And I continue to go to some community events like Christmas in Miracle and the Firefighters Department. We do green screen photos, it's like, which are really cute, if I do say so myself. And we have some new collaborations in twenty twenty five coming up, so we will have, I will not tell you better because I don't want to spoil anything for answer. And we also do a lot of programming. We did more seniors programs in twenty twenty four. We started up that. Very popular spectrum of senior's and we continue to do fitness for your aging brain. We did one on anti-fraud, like a fraud cyber security thing as well. And then we have a bunch of other programs for adults and for kids. There's, there's there. It's all in, it's all in the, in the. Report. And these are pictures from some of our, our kids' programs. We have literacy based ones, Storytime, Summer Reading Club. Then we have sort of edutainment with our March break, we were trying to do sort of STEAM, sort of science, technology, engineering art and that kind of thing. We also do some art programs, Art for Youth. We have some music programs for our littler kids. And then we just have some family fun things Saturdays, we have playdays, we had a big Bluey party one year, which was, if you don't know Bluey, you know it's a Bluey day. And that's just to encourage families to come and spend time at the library and read all the great books. And so it's kind of like a, a place to hang out. On Saturdays. So, and we have many other popular services. We have our e-collections, overdrive and canopy, it's like museum passes and map sacks. That whole long list of things that we offer, the library jigsaw puzzles and accessible services and stuff. I just took that right out of the report. And we wanted to thank our people, our, our friends in the library who tirelessly fundraised for us. They donated around six thousand dollars last year for, they've sponsored the e-collections and, and all that. They also gave us money to update our nonfiction collection. Some of the books are getting a little, little older and so the health books, finance, all that kind of thing, updated that. They sponsor programs, they sponsor a DVD pool, they bought us a vacuum cleaner when the old one died, lots, lots of things like that. Our volunteers come for a week and they shelve and they process new books and package by their own. All sorts of things like that. And we want to thank the Mad Gardeners who plant flowers at the garden, or, or at the library and take care of them all summer long, which is, looks lovely. We had some special thank yous for last year. Parkview Homes generously came and set our porch. It was a little, some of our underpings were no longer, no longer working properly. And they also extended it to for Benrick Sensibility, which was very delightful. They donate the materials and the labor. And did a fabulous job. And we also want to thank a hundred men in care from Northrendville who gave us some money to support our fitness for the aging brain program with seniors to subsidize that. We want to acknowledge our provincial funding, get our annual library operating grant, but we also get funding to support our internet connection. And for our interlibrary loan postage, which is, we get a good rate on that, but it does add up. It's almost, it was over a thousand dollars last year, so. And now onto our financial summary, where the money go. Comes from, where it goes. As you can see, the, the big one sixty-five percent is for Miracle Wilford. And most of that goes into salary and a few things that they cost back to us, like the audit and insurance and things like that. So the money that we're getting from the Monahue province is very critical for our other operating expenses like heat, electricity, phone, things like that, toilet paper, all that good stuff. And of course for collections, as I've mentioned, our e-collections and some other special things are free for by the friends in the library or special donations and funding. Past few years, we have a really big chunk of donated money. We have, past few years, a very generous patron has been donating. Rather large sums to us. We've been trying to put much of that way into, into our reserve. We've developed a term dammit and the goal of that is that it would be. Providing us with another revenue source ongoing. This was the first year that we got some money back from that. So we've got about forty-five hundred dollars to cover our expenses for that. One of the things we use that for is for things like computer equipment and software, IT support. Any interior work in the library that we need to paint or replace something. If we need to do consulting and special, special things like that and special projects because there's no funding. Nothing in our regular funding ever covers that. So, you know, we have to work on that. And library board has been busy in two thousand and twenty-four. The library lease was being sort of renegotiated. It's been a, it's been a long process, but that was finally accomplished, checkmark. We did some building work in addition to the porch. We also had to replace the furnace, things like that. And then we got this strategic planning process. Right now, we're in the community needs assessment, collecting data. And Monty has kindly included a link to our survey, online public survey in, in their monthly messenger with a tax bill. It's also on our. Website. If anybody hasn't done it, we'd love to hear from Monty people, just to, to know what you are working on. And also from council municipalities, I know you're working on a strategic plan. If there's any way that your strategic goals that we can turn to that, please talk to me, let us know. And we would like to thank our councils, Monty Council, Miracle Wilford Council for your support. As you saw in our revenue pie chart, most of our funding does come from our municipalities. We appreciate the continued support. We're well aware of the demands that we municipalities base and we're always mindful of this when we create our budgets and when we need to fund it. I know this one difficulty is, is that the agreement between us does not really have a very well book their funding formula. If Monty would like to, you know, kind of figure out something to, to. So it's easier to plan and so we don't have to come to each year with different amounts and things like that. Then, you know, we're totally willing to, like, we're totally on board to sit down, have a conversation, so just leave that as a thought. But in addition to your financial support, we also appreciate positive feedback that we get from our services. Our goal is always to provide library services that are high quality and good value to Miracle Wilford and the Monty community on behalf of council. We want services to be valued by our residents and many enthusiastic comments that I include in here every year. And also that support your municipal goals. I thought I would leave our last word is a couple of quotes that I particularly liked from our users from last year. That's, that's where we are. If anybody has any questions, I'm here to.
First, thanks for the interaction with Monahue School and the library. That's always super important. Is there a way when you do your membership and that, to let us know how many people from Monahue are members and things like that?
I can do that. Yeah, I usually can only do it once a year, but I mean, if, if that's, because I. I certainly compile these stats once a year and it's, it's it's not like a hundred percent accurate, because um like sometimes people come in and they, they use the library and they don't necessarily get a card or, or sometimes it sort of lapses because um it doesn't, um because they don't take their book and stuff, but they're still using like the comfort program. Um our system, which keeps you, says whether or not you're active, it doesn't know that, right? Um so it, it just tells you to take things out, but um I, I can figure out sort of a, a route.
Yeah, because I was just thinking that you have the membership, then you also have your interaction with the, the school. So how do we know? Well, it would be nice for us to know that a hundred of the kids from Montague School were involved in your library. You know, it's just sort of something like that, because we want to talk about formulas and things like that. It'd be great to know that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think I can, I but I don't have
Oh, I don't see.
Yeah.
But I just thought about the song.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much. It's super positive and really nice to hear all the stuff you're doing.
Oh, thank you. Wait, I try, I'm trying to have it tied up to you.
Uh
So moved by
The stuff that occurs for you.
So moved by Deputy Ruth Gerald and second by Councilor Crabtree, the council accepts the presentation by Mary Kate Mapp and CEO of the Miracle Public Library as information. All in favor? And that's Carrie. You?
I can actually go on those. I mean, so I did get, I, I can't, I think, yes. No, I can't. Where's that? You're just one of the others. There you go. It's really awesome. I understand. I'll go next. Who's last? Yes, so it is. Oh my gosh. Okay.
Thank you. So next on the docket is Lacey Corrigan. Thanks.
First, I'm just gonna apologize. I'm just getting a little cold, so I'm gonna try and get through this without losing my voice. Uh good evening. My name is Lacey Corrigan and I am a property owner of eight hundred Ford Road. On February eighteenth, Steve Pence from Novatech spoke in detail to the planning committee and the residents about the planning portion of our application. Since purchasing the property, the process has been a gradual and steady one. From obtaining the building permit to completing the and submitting our zoning amendment application, we have worked diligently to ensure that we are following the correct processes and doing our due diligence. I understand and respect that the community has concerns regarding the zoning amendment proposal to allow an additional use for the property. I came here tonight not only to introduce myself to the community and to counsel, but also to hopefully provide some peace of mind. While I understand that there are operational questions regarding the specifics of how this property will be used, some of these aspects are still in the planning phase. At this time, our primary focus is on obtaining the necessary zoning amendment, which is a crucial first step in bringing our vision to life. The zoning approval will provide us with the foundation we need to move forward, forward with the detailed business planning. Once we have the zoning in place, we will be able to work out the operational specifics with more clarity. We are also aware that as part of the approval process, a site plan control agreement will be required. This agreement will allow us to work closely with the township to ensure that the development is well planned, meets regulatory requirements and addresses the community's, could, community's concerns. What I can assure you tonight is that we plan to operate this business in full compliance with Montague's bylaws while striving to integrate into the community and build strongly relationships with our neighbors. We believe that a place of assembly will not only provide a venue for weddings, celebrations, business meetings, but will also serve as a gathering place for community events. Additionally, this place, sorry, this space has the potential to create local employment opportunities while also supporting local businesses, vendors, which could benefit the community entirety. Beyond economic benefits, we are also eager to contribute, contribute to Montague's community life, whether that be through supporting local initiatives, hosting community events or collaborating with neighboring businesses, we aim to be a positive and active part of this community. We recognize that noise and lighting can be a concern, especially in a rural setting like Montague. Please be assured that we are committed to minimizing any kind of disturbances to the surrounding area. We plan to carefully manage events to ensure that they are respectful of the surrounding area and will adhere to all noise bylaws outlined by the township. Our goal is to create a welcoming space for the community without disrupting the peaceful environment that makes Montague so special. If you've had a chance to drive by the property, you'll have seen the efforts we've made to clean up and improve both the structure and the landscape. Although I'm not currently resident of Montague Township, I am very familiar with the area, having grown up in a very similar rural setting. I deeply value the rural atmosphere and the close-knit community that Montague has to offer. We plan to bring the same mindset to this business. We look forward to fostering community connections in Montague, no matter the nature of the business that ultimately occupies eight hundred Ford Road. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. So moved by Councilor Bass and second by Councilor Johnson, the council accepts the presentation by Lacey Corrigan as information. All in favor? That's Carrie. Next, we have Mary Lou Sample, please.
Again, I get to speak. I hope my voice holds out. Um I'm here representing myself and my husband, Bob, who's sitting in the library. Um we are aware the applicant and their consultants have been in discussions with township staff since twenty twenty-four, whereas the residents that are directly impacted by the proposed zoning bylaw have only had ninety days to do a deep dive into official plans, bylaws and council proceedings. All residents affected by this possible amended amendment have worked very hard to understand this information with no right to an appeal with the OLT. We feel the complexity around the zoning bylaw approval process unfairly favors the applicant. What we have come to understand is that the official plan for the Township of Montague's section three point six point five point one and the provincial planning statement, section two point six point one, current permitted uses of rural land does not include a place of assembly. As well, the official plan of the Township of Montague, three point six point five point one, section six, states commercial uses must be appropriate for the, the proposed location. It is battling why staff would suggest at the March Four Committee of the whole that even though these regulations do not include a place of assembly, they do not exclude a place of assembly from being built on rural land. This statement conveys a potential bias in the interpretation of the regulations that clearly favors the applicant. Even if the official plan did contain general categories and not specific uses, it does state commercial development must be directed to settlement areas. The future use of the apartment raises some concerns. Will this be rented out as an Airbnb or some other type of short-term rental? Does the township have regulations or bylaws guiding, guiding this type of use? To date, bylaw has been unable to address numerous concerns raised regarding the light spill issue around the empty building and the disruption this causes to our right and nocturnal wildlife's right to a dark night sky. Clearly, our concerns will only escalate with a future projected seventy-seven space parking lot and the required additional parking or lighting, sorry. The deplorable condition of Ford Road and the dust is viewed as a failure of public works to address the multitude of complaints that have been received over the years. Approval of commercial use at eight hundred Ford Road will result, result in an increase in traffic that will only serve to exacerbate this situation. It is worthwhile noting that we live here. We choose a quiet rural lifestyle. We participate in the community. We understand and welcome progress, but it is the responsibility of council and staff to balance future development with the needs of the people that live here. The township's motto is country living at its best. I will ask each of you, does this zoning amendment live up to that motto? Would you approve it if it was across the street from your homes? With respect, as landowners and residents of properties surrounding eight hundred Ford Road, we request that council deny the zoning amendment ZB twenty-four dash zero zero one as an invalid land use request based on section three point six point five point one of the official plan and section two point six point one of the PPS. However, should the zoning bylaw be approved, we request the following. That council revise property standard twenty-eight oh one to address general light spill issues and the need for a dark night sky, including the five lighting principles of responsible outdoor lighting. That as a good neighbor gesture, the current owners are directed to immediately turn off the lights, except for those over exits, and place the remainder, remainder on motion sensors, except for during events. That the current noise bylaw, twenty-six fifty-five dash two zero zero two, section two, be amended to state, no person shall cause or permit any unusual noises that would be likely to disturb the inhabitants of Montague Township between the hours of ten o'clock in the afternoon and seven o'clock in the forenoon of the following day. This is the standard in other towns and townships. That as residents directly affected by this development, we also seek to have input into this agreement. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. So moved by Councilor Crabtree and second by Deputy Ruth Gerald, the council accepts the presentation by Mary Lou Sample as information. All in favor? And that's Carrie. Thank you. And next we'll have a presentation from Michael Pierre.
Um thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Michael Pierre and as you know, I'm opposed to the uh development at eight hundred Ford Road. I know it's a little bit late in the game and it's already been recommended and you're voting on it tonight, but I would urge you to reconsider uh on the basis that the development is not in accordance with the township official plan. The township official plan uh describes what commercially uses are permitted on rural land and it describes locally oriented, rurally oriented, small-scale businesses that serve local residents, businesses and firms. Uh the proposed development isn't any of those things. It's not small-scale, it's not rurally oriented, not locally oriented, and it doesn't serve the local community. There must be a reason why those specific words were included in the official plan. There must have been an intention to limit the types of commercial developments in rural areas, and I would urge council to follow the official plan and uh go down this bylaw. Uh as my neighbor pointed out, the uh motto is uh country living at its best, and this development is not consistent with that. Now, uh should you choose to pass the bylaw tonight, I have an additional point that I would like for our council to consider. You have seen that local residents are very concerned about the impact that this development will have on our residential area. There are concerns about lights and noise and mischief in particular. And uh I'm asking the township to be proactive in informing residents about how specifically these concerns will be addressed in the site plan. Uh the township official plan and the UNRCA county plan both make a recommendation in situations where there's a potential for noise generated from a commercial activity to impact residential areas. The plans recommend a noise assessment in accordance with provincial guidelines. Now, we all have an interest in ensuring that noise and mischief do not become a problem. To protect local residents and um our right to use our property and enjoy our property, but also to reduce complaints and hopefully uh eliminate the need for any kind of enforcement action. A proper noise assessment would be a good uh objective tool that could help to establish limits on noise and to ensure that reasonable measures are taken to mitigate the impact on our neighborhood. So I'm asking council to ensure that a noise assessment is done uh in accordance with provincial guidelines as part of developing the site plan and then to keep uh residents informed on uh the development of the site plan and what exactly specifically is going to be uh addressed by. That's it. Thank you.
Moved by Councilor Bass and second by Councilor Johnson, that council accepts the presentation by Michael Pierre as information. All in favor? And that's Carrie. We'll move on now to our report of municipal officers. Uh public works manager and our administrator Trevor for our final twenty twenty-four road needs study.
The final front of council this evening is the uh final roads need study. This has been a relatively long process. Um this document still contains a number of errors, as I've indicated to council in the report. Um there is some good information in the report as far as some of the maintenance tools that we can use moving forward. Uh the township already uses a number of those tools. But I think it is pretty important to, to just note that in this road needs study, um staff had provided proper documents several times and that's attached in the emails that is provided to council um with the report not being updated accordingly and still that incorrect information coming back to us unfortunately. Um our recommendation at this time is to move forward, accept the report as information with staff bringing back on an annual basis and who are current up-to-date uh road need assessment or a listing of the roads. Um as everybody's aware, roads can deteriorate quickly depending on changes and a whole bunch of other items. Um the listing and the reasoning as to why some of the roads are placed where they are on the report was never justified or provided to council or to staff. Um so as I said, some of the information um is understandable and where it's coming from and why it's put forward. Some of it seems like a copy and paste uh from others. So it's rather, it's disappointing, uh but we think we should accept it as information. Information. Um we will accurately update the surface type information, um the length, the proposed upgrading, um all those items that were provided several times and are still contained wrong in the report. And uh staff will also, so the report refers to a loose top maintenance program. There's nothing in there uh in relation to that. Uh council had previously directed staff to come forward with a plan. That will still be the, the process that we will look at uh along with costing to upgrade as opposed to maintaining gravel, all those types of things. Um it is also recommended that based on our procurement policy, we can um suspend uh consultants from bidding based on current projects uh and what's been provided to us. So we're recommending the council approve the recommendation to suspend uh the consultant for the next five years, basically. So they won't be able to provide any kind of costing for our next road needs study uh just based on the unsatisfactory performance. Um there's a lot of items in the terms of conditions that are not met, that are not provided. Uh it's gone back, it's been almost a year. Um and um now the township's kind of getting blamed. So I think it's that we cut our um losses in that sense and us as staff will bring forward some good information to council and uh look forward. So with that, is there any questions from council?
Trevor?
Well, just thinking about some information, will that affect us going for grants and things if we want to work on roads now? Like, does that stops? Because do we need an engineer's signature report with that or?
Yes.
I wonder if that affects us.
So chair through you. So we're gonna accept it as information as a guiding document.
Okay.
Okay, so um and in any sense, a road needs study, we're never all gonna agree on what road needs to be done and when. No matter who you ask, we're never going to agree. So we can use it as a guiding document um so that some of those big road projects that we can't afford to do are, are in that document um for grant applications. So we're accepting it as information in a guiding document, but we're not saying this is concrete and this is what's being done and when, because some of the information's not even accurate in it. Um so I think that it's more of a guiding tool and as we said, roads can change based on development, based on environmental impacts, all different reasons. And the plans have to get switched. It's no different than the twenty nineteen road needs study. That wasn't followed as a concrete plan. That was brought on an annual basis by the previous public works manager to say, this is what's happened, this is what's switched around and why. That would be what we will do moving forward as well. Um with the approval of council to do that, it really is a more accurate way of addressing issues. Um because this, you have to think Because this, you have to think of this one point in time is when the consultant drove the road. And it could have been a really good day. I know that it was later last year, spring came early, so the roads were already dried up and there wasn't the same issues. So it's very difficult for them as well because it's one point in time that they're looking at it. Along in our recommendation is for the next RFP for our twenty twenty nine roads need study that we include that the roads need to be rated by two people from the consulting firm at separate times and scored separately, as well as the public works manager scoring the road for an average of the three to come to a more progressive scoring number as opposed to one individual at one point in time and there it's very subjective then. So that's kind of the recommendation as well is to try and get public works manager and the and the public works department who drives these roads every day. And at one particular point in time, maybe that road's in good shape, but we know that in April or March there's sections that aren't or there's sections that flood or there's sections that do this. So it's to try and get a better overall picture in the grand scheme of things for the twenty twenty nine roads need study would be our recommendation.
Since we had nothing but problems with this from the start, do we have to pay them the full amount of money? Or is there, or is there, since it wasn't done right, is there? I just know I'm in business. If you don't do a job right, you don't get paid for it, or for at least some of it.
So chair through you. So that's always up to council to make that decision, keeping in mind that the balance that's left to be paid. If we go to court, we're going to be well over legal fees. It's only a seventeen hundred dollar balance that's left. So that doesn't add up to much as far as legal fees if we're taken to court. But it's always entirely up to council. My recommendation from the finance side would be to provide the letter stating you're suspended from for bidding on any other engineering of any other work in our municipality for five years.
Does, so you're going to take this document and we're going to modify it, update it for our records and for our view, I guess?
Yes. So the chair through you, sorry. The intent would be for us to fix some of the information and we will bring it back to council. We just need some time with it. We have some other bigger projects. And we've already set our twenty twenty five budget. So we plan on bringing back a revised budget for our twenty twenty six discussions for budget. So the council and the public can see it at that time as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, Ali, I know you put a ton of work into this as well, and I think it's, it's, it's much appreciated, very much appreciated and I think it's great. And I think, I guess one of my, my, my big parts of it is it's great to have that guiding document and everything else. And as we go through twenty twenty five and and work towards it, I wonder if we should be not necessarily jumping into another one right away, but instead of maybe waiting to twenty twenty nine, let's look at maybe twenty twenty seven on that sort of new council time and all that to to maybe bring forth an idea to do the, an update of the road seats that we've done. Instead of waiting to twenty twenty nine, I think it's great that we're going to go through it. And I think our public works manager is going to have time to kind of really understand what's going on over that timeframe to us all. But in that, in that, by twenty twenty seven, might be a good time to do that upgrade instead of waiting till twenty twenty nine. So your thoughts on that or?
Sure. So chair, so, or the editor me. I just went ahead and spoke, sorry.
And that's a great point because I mean, like, I don't want to be in that position for a couple of years and really have a really good grasp of, along with the, and obviously we have a great crew out there that's, 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 that's
Very good understanding of roads.
They know the roads, they understand it.
Yeah.
And I understand the limitations they work in, but I just weren't like that, just to kind of go forward, make sure that we have that public sort of view and document and everything else and we're really moving forward and it has something anyways.
So, uh, sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. So the first thing I say is that, and even for the public that might be wondering, why don't you guys just go ahead and do them yourselves anyways? Normally it's nice to have that third party view so that there's no subjective, oh, well, we know, you know, the council wants this done. That that third party is saying this is the roads that need to be done based on this criteria. So that's normally why it's done by a third party. I think absolutely it's a good idea that if we have a whole new council coming in after the twenty twenty six election, or even some new, some old, we might get a council that says, look, we want to go ahead and those discussions can be had for the twenty twenty seven budget or twenty twenty eight budget for for council to really make the decision of, no, we like the document that is presented right now with the public works manager and staff being highly involved and we think we've made progress. Just like the roads need study now, this roads need study that's in front of you this evening, it states that we need to put a whole bunch of investment into roads and that, you know, there's been no advancement. But meanwhile, they have improved almost twenty percent over the last five years. So there's some discrepancies. So I think that we can actually make it a note that during that orientation of the new council, that that's a discussion point from public works to say, this is our current plan. It's set for twenty twenty nine, but would you like it to be sooner? Keeping in mind that it may also be a good time to do it because the development charges also come up for twenty twenty seven. And if we're looking at up surfacing some gravel roads to a hardtop, that all needs to be discussed during development charges time too. So might kind of all work together.
So I guess that's a great, like, like, that's a great answer, obviously, like you always do. But I think that'd be a, a great time to bring that forward. Maybe they put in the notepad or like that, notepad is saying twenty twenty seven as we, as we have those discussions that so yeah, we're formulated together. I think that's a, I think that's a great idea to see how we can continue to move on to as well, so.
Because I think on the new development charges study, you're going to have some of those discussions of council of saying, look at this road scene, a lot of development. If we, you know, if we start to include some of that possibility of servicing that those are discussed in that. And like I said, that's for twenty twenty seven, that's on my board too. So that'll be a joint venture of the public works manager and myself. But I think it would segue really well together.
I think that's great. I think I look forward to the, I mean, we made some very few gains over the last few years with the, with the gravel. And I, and it's, it'd be exciting to see how we can sort of evolve that and move forward with that. And I'm, I'm sure Ed's all over, just excited and jumping into it together in that deal as well. So I'd say, but I think it's really good and I agree with obviously, it sucks that we have to pay that, like, I think Jim exactly bang on it, but I think also that letter is a big point too as well. We've been sitting other municipalities around, look at that too as well and recognize, you know, our, that, that word gets out there too as well about that kind of stuff too as well. So it's unfortunate that we had to be the a giddy thing in that sense, but, but I think we can move forward. So thank you, Ali, and thank you, Ed. That's been a great, great report and great information.
Before I read, I want to say on behalf of Jeff saying thanks to Ali, thanks to all staff that took the time to read the roads need study. The crew and first and everybody that took time, I'm not sure if Grace had to do that too, but all staff that took the time because it was several reviews that were done by staff.
And I just want to say, all of public works, last year when I was like fortunate enough to be acting manager at public works, all all of the crew was involved several, been through several iterations as well. So just kudos to them because they do know the roads. And I think that some of their knowledge really does need to be reflected in the next one.
So with by councillor Johnson and second by councillor Avast, the council accepts the current road needs study as information only. Be used by staff as a working document to help guide future road rehabilitate them and maintenance projects. And the council directs staff on an annual basis to bring back the road listing with the accurate information of surface type, length and proposed upgrading of surfaces where necessary, as the information contained in the document continues to be inaccurate. And the council directs staff to prepare a loose top road plan that includes cost to maintain and potential cost to upgrade roads that may meet the requirements that will need to be established by council in the plan. And the council approved the recommendation from the department head and clerk administrator to suspend Alpine and Martin Consultants Limited from bidding on any future projects with the township for the next five years due to their unsatisfactory performance by failing to meet the terms and conditions in delivering this roads need study as per policy four zero two one dash twenty twenty three, section four point four eight. And further, that council directs staff for the RFP and the twenty twenty nine roads need study that the rating of the roads be an average of two consultants separately providing a score plus the public works manager scoring of the road for an average of all three scores to be used to provide a more comprehensive review of the roads rather than one individual perspective at one particular point in time. All in favor? And that is Carrie. Thank you. Next, we have our public works manager for our wheel.
Eric, good evening, council. So the wheel, next. We're looking at replacing. Current excavator was included in the asset management plan to be replaced in twenty twenty two. It has been delayed because of other capital purchases. It's certainly do now, if anyone's seen it lately, due to its age and high operating hours. This thing gets used for all kinds of operations quite often. So once again, going through the canoe procurement program, staff have reached out to vendors for pricing. It's a tough environment these days to get quotes on equipment like this with everything going on in the financial environment. These quotes presented in the report this evening are only valid for what would be thirteen days at this point. And should be noted that no one can guarantee what will happen with tariffs on this stuff. So pricing is as presented, but we'll keep that in mind. So you can see the quotes here. It's, it's, it's a pretty basic piece of equipment. It's nothing very specific or customized in any way. But some of the features we're looking for, due to the type of work it does, it's not only ditching, okay, it's probably the primary function with ditching bucket. But the thing does a lot of brushing around the township, right, with the brushing head? So some of these vendors here were not able to meet the minimum specifications. So staff created a minimum specification, the things we're looking for in this piece of equipment. It was provided to the vendors. The quotes provided in front of you. Unfortunately, we only had one that met compliance. Saying that, as of today, since this report was created, I did receive two more quotes, revised quotes from these vendors. But again, the one from Toromont, it would change it to compliant, but still was substantially more expensive than the, than the quote from Terra Pro. Brand were able to provide a quote. The reason they were not compliant is because they don't make a machine the same size that we're looking for on wheels. They make them on tracks, but obviously that's not practical for what we're looking for. So that would be why they're not compliant. So saying that, Terra Pro remains the only one compliant in this quote and the price is as presented. So going along with that, again, one of the main things this thing's used for is brushing, as we all know roadside brushing. So the brush head that we currently use, it, it, it was bought in twenty twelve. Okay, so we're recommending we go ahead and replace it at the same time. It can be retained, but would need to be modified to fit on the new machine. The coupler that's on this head is called a wedge coupler. It's a, it's a pretty antiquated way of attaching these attachments to a machine. You can still get a wedge type, but it's, it's really kind of unheard of in a new machine in this day and age. It requires the operator to get out and physically remove bolts and pound a wedge out and everything else. So it's a pretty adequate way of doing things. So they make what's called an S type, it's a quick coupler. The operator can stay in the machine. It's obviously much safer. So saying that, we can modify the old head to receive this new coupler. This would be the cost here listed. It's an estimated six thousand dollars. So we'd have to buy the coupler and then you'd pay the fee for the welder to cut off the old one, install a new one. Yeah. So saying that recommendations, just to replace it, those are the two options. It, it's, like I said, twenty twelve, it's a type of attachment that takes a lot of abuse. You got to keep that in mind. It's a large rotating mast with carbide teeth. So to make the investment six thousand dollars and retain and put it on a new machine, I'm not sure the lifespan would really be there. Moving on, the additional five thousand dollars here just to reserve for additional things. Deckles need to be installed, two way radio, stuff like that before you put it into service. And yeah, so option present. We're be to award the contract to Terra Pro to supply the case excavator with a new brush shed. Or we can go again, go ahead and Terra Pro with a new machine and modify the existing brush shed that we have, or of course we could defer it to another year. Any questions on that?
Uh, whichever lifespan are we looking, so like if we put out the four hundred and eighty, two thousand dollars plus possible twenty five percent tariff, all depending on what happens in the next foreseeable future. What type of lifespan are we looking at? Like, the current one had how much of a lifespan?
Two twelve?
Yeah, so well, the brush, sorry, the brush head is twenty twelve. I believe the machine is two thousand and four, the excavator itself.
We got the excavator in two thousand and nine.
Yeah.
But it's two thousand and four, so it was already used prior to our purchasing it.
That's correct.
So, so it should last.
So twenty, twenty plus, twenty plus years, yeah.
Youngest person here.
So, so saying that, just to, to circle back to the tariffs, I did ask some of these vendors how, what, you know.
Purchase tomorrow, can't they?
Exactly, right? So they gave me this fifteen day, you know, validation for this quote, right? So what are we talking about for tariffs? If you want to talk about case specifically, the little bit here, he didn't anticipate they would be there. Saying that, we don't know what's going to happen day to day, right? The machine itself, this one is made overseas. It does shit through Baltimore. And then comes across into Canada that way. And then the outfitting is done at the local dealer in Stittsville. So it's not manufactured in the U.S. So whether it's going to be exempt of tariffs or not, it's hard to say. At this time, he figures, he, he figures now, but. Yeah. Yeah. So we've already budgeted how much for this?
Four fifty.
Four fifty, four fifty, yeah. Okay. So where would the rest of the money come from?
So I can take that question if you want. So we budgeted four fifty. The intent is to sell the excavator and the brushing heads separately as units. I think as provided as a recommendation, the public works manager, that the head itself, you're going to get, some people have excavator and might be interested in just that brushing head unit and then the excavator itself. You may get somebody that's interested in both, but we're going to put them up separately. We're hoping to get anywhere from twenty to thirty kind of min for the two items. So we would obviously use any of those surplus monies towards the purchase of the new unit. Also, council hasn't seen the twenty twenty four surplus or year end. It's coming to the April first meeting. In twenty twenty five budget, we did set aside one hundred eighty five thousand of surplus from twenty twenty four. We have substantially more surplus than that that will also be able to be used. What we've done also is that in twenty twenty five, if public works has any surplus with winter operations and things like that, instead of pulling from reserves, we've used that surplus as kind of like as we operate through. So really, we're hoping that worst case scenario, we'd have to pull about seventeen thousand from reserves. I'm not anticipating having to.
Okay. Thank you.
Instead of going through Baltimore and then I'm shipping direct to Canada?
Question.
Well, I was just wondering if that
That's what a lot of companies now in Europe are doing and same thing from Asia, but just because I happen to know this, it's not as easy to switch ports and to come in, like, it's a lot of clearance through customs and I'd say have to set up a whole thing so they can't do it on a dime.
But I just wasn't sure if it had to get there. Something else on it, like, and then it had.
Take, take some, like, lid chocolates. They normally come through the States then up into Canada. Now they're coming directly to somewhere in Montreal, apparently, so.
Yeah, no.
So just, I, I, I think you pretty well nailed it as far as the, the, the dollars was, there's, there's five thousand bucks left in that reserve after like sort of the purchase of this, but you're not anticipating, you think if we have to pull from somewhere else, it's going to be like a surplus or anything else that would be able to from twenty twenty four that would help cover that?
So chair through you. So what you're seeing, are you, you're going based off the twenty twenty five draft budget? You haven't seen the surplus from twenty twenty four yet. So that allocation is going to be different. So there's going to be, depending on how council approves the surplus usage. But Public Works did have some surplus because the previous winter was relatively mild and ended quickly. So you'll see that better picture, I think, on the first of April. But there will be funds and I'm not anticipating having to pull from reserves similar to what we've done in previous years. Even with the purchase of the half done, council approved the use of reserves. We didn't need any. We use the, that year's surplus. So whenever the operational side sees knock on wood, I guess, good weather through the winter, we try to use that to replace capital and to be forward thinking on equipment and maintenance as opposed to going to the taxpayers and increasing the tax rate.
Perfect. Great answer. Thank you.
So moved by Deputy Jeanne-Gerard and second by councillor Croftree, the council approved the purchase of a new wheeled excavator and brush head through the LAS canoe procurement group contract, which is an approved procurement method under bylaw four zero two one dash twenty twenty three, item three point three G, and the council awarded the purchase to Terra Pro Construction date our recent equipment in the amount of four hundred and eighty two thousand One fifty-three point eighty, inclusive of non-refundable E S P, and the council approves the use of up to five thousand. For the outfittings to the new excavator unit, and the council approves the use of up to thirty-seven thousand, one fifty-three point eighty in reserves. If the disposal of the two thousand eight John Deere and brushing head does not sell, and or if surplus from two thousand twenty-five does not cover the difference. And the council deems the use, two thousand eight John Deere wheeled excavator and attachment surplus. To the needs of the township upon the arrival of the new case excavator and brushing head. And further, that council approves the disposal of the John Deere excavator and attachments through gov deals. Upon arrival of the new case excavator, all in paper, that's carried, thank you. So moved by Councilor Bass and second by Councilor Johnson, the council approved the minutes, many before meeting of March fourth, two thousand twenty-five. And approve the recommendations contained within, all in favor, that's carried. Question. So if you move to our first bylaw. So moved by Deputy Reeve Carroll and second by Councilor Bass, that bylaw four one three zero dash two thousand twenty-five. Being a bylaw to a man's own violence, four zero seven zero dash two thousand twenty-four. Be read first, second, and third time and pass sign and seal to this eighteenth day of March, twenty, all in favor? This carried. No, no motion, notice of motion, action items. E, D, 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 E.
F.
Yeah, H. And E.
Okay, uh, I'm just gonna quickly note. Uh, for D and E, because it it's coming up on the, on the county meeting, and and kudos to staff for, uh, bringing those things forward, as they are, uh, you know, important things that, that are, that are. Information items that that they foresaw that were obviously something that were needed, so kudos to staff for making sure, recognizing that the, uh. The applications of division and the, uh, the anger kit and the, uh, growth survey is there. Uh, I want to give a quick update, uh, about F, I'll go on to F now, about the, uh, traffic advisory, uh, working group minutes, uh, thanks for posting those in the information minutes too as well. And I think that's interesting, because there's been a lot of stuff that's been talked about over that, uh, and you've seen it a little bit too as well with, uh, there's either changes of speeds. Uh, on county roads, but also making the community safety zones, which we have out on, uh. In front of Rosedale Hall, uh, which was raped by the community members and staff and 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 everybody, kind of giving the information to show that. It should be a spot that we should have a community safety zone, but one of the, uh, one of the big discussions that's been going on with the traffic advisory community is talking about. Uh, speed management and and having, uh, the speed cameras, uh, and you can only do that in the community safety zones. Uh, and it's, nothing's being implemented right away, but it's one of those things I want to make sure that, uh, everybody's aware that is being discussed. Um, and what it looks like as far as, uh. If they were to go out and, uh, and, uh, ways that that might be able to reduce the speed of the traffic, uh, and the, and the safety. Uh, when we did look at the data, you'll notice the report, they didn't really talk about, uh, releasing a lot of talks, but there's something that we were able to see to discuss, and. I will say that, uh, in front of Rosedale Road, or on Rosedale Road in front of ours, is actually considered one of the, the key points that you could put one of those cameras. Because it's probably seeing the most, uh, increased speed, uh, over the speed limit, uh, in the community safety zone. So I think it's one of those things that it's being discussed, it's being talked about, and I think it'd be, it'd be really good that we have that discussion with the council, uh, in the future, if it's. Uh, if. There's sort of a talk that we're gonna go forward with the county, and as it, as being discussed at the county too as well, but here as the county council. I want to make sure that we're being discussed, if anything like that comes to, uh, our neighborhood, to make sure that we have a, an idea or say or our understanding. Uh, the ultimate thing is, is to make sure that we're trying to find ways to make it safer, but we also don't want it to be this thing where people think that it's, uh, that. Cash grab or that cash money thing or whatever like that, so I want to open that up to make sure that we're very open and transparent about it, it's being talked about, it's being discussed, but we're not even remotely. And I don't want to put it to people out there saying that we're putting speed cameras in Latah County, we're not at remotely at that point right now. But it is talking about trying to find an L speed, uh, safety on our roads is so important, and that's what we've talked about, it's just being discussed, and I think it's important that we stay as, as transparent. And it's great that the minutes also show that too as well, but I already wanted to emphasize that, what was my next one? H, uh, I, I, this is one that we just talked about, is the resolution to support Team Canada approach. Uh, it's something we could do at the, at the township, but I think we, we've really done that to talk about, like, a lot of places to make sure that we're, you know. Doing things whatever we can in Canada, by Canada, trade in Canada, uh, and 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 to push the, the governments to make sure that, that that trade is easier. And maybe that part of that will be to not go through Baltimore for, uh, for the, the machine is big, like, who knows what that might look like, but to continue to push that. And I think that's a good push in the county, along with everybody else doing that, so I just wanted to, like, emphasize that, we could always do something here, at ours, but I think the county has really pushed that, so. Um, the drinking water one, you brought it up, which is fantastic, there was also something in the local paper that talked about it, because we're, like, the spring thaw flooding could affect well water. I, I think I've, I brought this up every year since I've been on council, because I think, and 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 if we, we're gonna post it, like, it sounds like we're gonna do that, which is fantastic. People need to test their water, if you live in the country, this is the time to do it especially, um, and I think that's one of our jobs to make sure that we really put that out there. I know staff has really been talking about it too as well, uh, to make sure that people are aware of it, but we. Just test your water, because we don't want people to get sick, especially if we have this thaw, so I think it's really important to talk about, and.
Hang on that, there was a post by a, a new resident saying that this is her first time, and that was the thing, it was that they were having some color issue with their water, and. So members of the community, you know, gave a comment about what they, they felt it was, so that's it, there are people that are coming into the community, not realizing about testing well water.
Yeah, and it's free, it's free, and it's, and it's great. Because you want to do that, because you don't want to get, I mean, sick from your well, from your well water, we have amazing water in Montague, we have a plethora of water in Montague. We just have to make sure that you, your, your well is, uh, is is drinkable. Uh, last one, it's, uh, it's always nice, uh, you know, like, the real deal is a great, uh, organization that we support every year, uh, with a small donation. Uh, their thank you card is really nice, but it's always nice to get that thank you card, because, uh, they're doing really, really good things, uh, and it's nice to have that appreciation back, so that is my last point, is. Thank you.
All right, Chair three, so going to the drinking water and, um, some of those new people coming in that maybe haven't had wells and things like that before. So staff do plan on developing a welcome package, so for new residents, and that will be one of those things that's contained in there. Um, that, you know, the water sampling bottles are available here for free to drop off at the health unit, kind of that information, that will be one of those dockets. Um, septic care will be another docket, um, obviously, but, so we do plan on developing something, we'll bring it to council. But that is one of those things that we said we should include in there, because, um, you'd be surprised how often we are asked these questions.
Okay, so we have no unfinished business, other business now, I'll open it up to questions of the meeting to the audience.
A couple of questions, on the roads need study there, where you were not happy with the person you hired. Could you send? That information to municipal. All these in the neighborhood, so they're aware of it, so they don't hire the same person and have the same problem, or is that not a life of that?
So Chair three, so that's not part of our policy, our policy is that we provide a letter stating, um, obviously. If they put us down as a reference, uh, we would have the ability to advise of the, just the issues that we saw. But I think you also have to give people time, um, to grow and to learn from experiences, and hopefully they do, and they move forward and, uh. You know, provide, um, documents that maybe other municipalities would like to see. Based on our policy, the letter will just strictly be going to the company.
Second question. On the, on the community zone by the high school or by the public school. Could that, because now it's, it doesn't include the twenty-two acres. Where you have a lack of it's plain, could you not extend that down the road a little further to include the twenty-two acres?
So, you know, when I, I, where did it, and it ends before the twenty-two acres?
Yeah, yeah, it's just.
That's a very, very, very good question, uh, yeah, okay, I think that's something that's. Yeah, that's something that's definitely known, that's, that's a great, a great point, that we should, we should look at extending that, anything else too as well. Okay, thank you for that talking.
Good point, and any other questions of our audience?
I just like to know, was this decision about eight hundred Ford Road made up before we even got here tonight?
We have our packages that we receive, we read our agendas. And then we listened to the information that was provided, provided tonight to hear if there was any new information to provide us whether or not we would have a difference of opinion. So I personally can say that, and it, and, um. A decision could have been made, but there is also an opportunity then that I could have changed my decision based on new information being provided to me tonight.
There is a bylaw out there about this being on rural land, it seems like that doesn't matter. I'd like to know how you guys came to this conclusion that it's okay to do it now.
Based on the ability for, um, site plan amendments. Um, information provided to us from our planning staff and our senior planner, who's a consultant. That's how we would be basing our information.
So another big question I was asked is about our roads. Our road is in bad shape, today I had to seriously go through my block to come back to my place, instead of coming from, what, from the south side. Because the road was so bad with the potholes that it was impossible without putting your vehicle through a lot. This is not, this is normal for us, we get bad rains, we get all that through the year, and this is what we get for roads. What do you, what are you gonna do about that? You're, uh, you're allowing this to have more vehicles on it on a regular basis, we have no idea how much they're going to rent out, and how many days and weeks they're going to rent out. All we know is we're gonna have a lot more traffic on a road, on it, seventy percent of the time is brutal. Like, when the greater goes by, we know who live there, we, we got two, three days of nice roads, that's it. Then we're back to the potholes again, we're back to all of that. What's gonna happen with the roads? Like, you're putting more traffic on it, and you're telling us it's gonna be okay.
That's, I'm gonna turn it over to staff on the, on the roads.
So, sorry, I'm not, I'm speaking. Okay, so, um, again, as presented this evening, we'll be having those discussions as far as. Um, of course, to come back to council, they've asked for it, for gravel roads and potential upgrading of gravel roads. That all comes down to what kind of development has been on that road, what's the traffic on the road, um, what's the current maintenance cost of a gravel road, because. That there are obviously costs to that as well, and then that development charge study that we're talking about of starting to include those up servicing on those studies. So that we're getting those fees from that new development, so I think that that's been the direction of council, um, they're aware that we have some issues. Um, and we're trying to address them.
But on the list that's up right now for the roads for this year, our road is not even part of that, so we're going, we're, what's gonna happen with our road this year?
So you're correct, so Ford Road on the gravel, is it set to get gravel this year, Ford? No, okay, so. Um, obviously, those discussions will be happening, um, to be coming back to two thousand twenty-six, so I can't promise you anything for this year, um, but. This council has also been trying to be transparent and open, there will be community opportunity to speak and open houses as well to bring forward all of this. Information.
But if I was the owner of eight hundred Ford Road, and I think, I feel for them right now, because. Imagine renting this place out, you get married, you're gonna put on your, on this whole beautiful place, everything is good, but my God, you don't want to drive down the roads to get to it. Because it's nothing but a puddle, it's brutal, how would you like to have that on your webpage? People replying about the place that you rented out and you put all this money into it, and you, we, as everybody lives there, we know. There's never gonna be a good road for them to come down, except for the couple of days after they graded it, and if it rains right after they graded it, we lost it. So as the owners, I don't get it, like, I don't, they put all this money into it, and I knew all along with this here. There's no way as a business owner, they would put all this money into this place, and you guys are gonna reject it, so I knew there was something up here, and that we were never gonna stop this. But what gets me is how you guys know the how the road is, let's just do it anyways, blows my mind. Like, help us out on the road, do something.
Um, so I, I live on Ford Road, I do, I'm advising. We, we all know spring thaws, roads turning to potholes, and, and if we had an unlimited budget, we would pave everything, it's, it's unfortunate, we can't. Um, Ford Road is, is one of those roads, it, it's got a fifty kilometer speed limit. That never gets respected by people who live on the road, don't live on the road, during a spring thaw, it doesn't help with potholes, it does, it, it makes things worse. The reality is, eight hundred Ford Road ha- has, they would have been able to have a garden center, so let's put aside the fact.
But that's what they said at first, they're gonna do a garden center, they never did, so where's?
And I just, just one opportunity, I, I listened to you, and I remember. They have the opportunity to do a garden center, if we completely reneg everything and we say, okay, we're not allowing. They could have a garden center starting right now, and, and there's nothing that would stop them from hiring two, three, four hundred people a day. And there's, we would not be able to implement or change anything that's what they're doing, right now, they're gonna have an event center. And, and, and that's, once again, once everything's done, they, they, they put in their stuff, like, everything's done, we go through the planning stages. Once that's all done, they'll be able to have that, if they have one event, two events a week. You're, you're looking at a potential of seventy-seven cars up to twice a week.
Yes, but we got it from all hours to two in the morning, at least for the garden center, we had it maybe from eight o'clock to.
You're now changing your argument, your argument was vehicle coming, now you're changing the timeframe, I, I'm, I'm, I'm. Going after your vehicle, you're gonna have it no matter what, whether it was a garden center or whether it's, it's, it's a wedding venue.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm just saying.
I agree with you, I agree with you, but why I brought up about the garden center, and I know this is gonna happen, and we live on this road, we're gonna have to live with it. They're gonna be partying it up till two in the morning, we don't know what kind of crowd's gonna be there, could be young crowd, could be an old crowd, we don't know. But when they come out at one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, the young ones, you're telling me they're not gonna be spinning their tires, they're not gonna be doing all sorts of crap on our roads when they take off? Yes, they will, because they're young, we did it as kids, you're gonna do, like, they're gonna do it as kids. I'd go to wreck our roads, we're a garden center, anybody that went in there, went in to buy something. And comes out and drives out nice and comfortably and, and, and takes care of the road as they're going, they're not spending their tires on doing on, that's not gonna be the case right now. We have till two in the morning, we have to worry about this, and then we're gonna have people coming out, my question is, and I brought this up before. When somebody loses control and goes onto somebody's property, takes out their fences, who's responsible for that then? They had the party, they're the ones that allowed it all, they're the ones that served all those drinks that served time. They come out and they turn out and they lose control of their vehicle, and they go through people's properties, take out their fences, maybe do worse. Is it on our insurance to go and cover that, or are they going out, or can we go out to them for that?
It, it gave them their liability, if, if it's a drunk driver that goes through a fence, it would give them their liability.
But what if they go out and they laugh, we don't know who did it.
And we call overdues and stuff, so, yeah, yeah, but. So we can address.
Again, you're putting all this on us and saying, deal with it, that's exactly what I'm seeing right now, I had a lot of confidence in council. I dealt with them when I was building my property, everything went really, really well, and everything like this, I got no problem with council, but I've told, I've said it right from the start. There's no way they put this kind of money into this property and knew they were gonna fail, there's no way. So there was something that was up in all of this, somebody knew something, or some, I don't know what, I'm not saying that you guys are under their payroll, I'm not saying that. All I'm saying that, as, as a business, I'm not gonna put that kind of money out, only to frigging turn out and get turned down, there's. No way, so.
The last sentence of my speech was the business that ultimately occupies eight hundred and four more road, no matter what, this is gonna be a business.
Supposed to be garden center first, what happened to that?
So we passed the bylaw, so now, and we were.
It never became a garden center.
No, we passed the bylaw to approve the resuming.
Uh, it doesn't matter, I'm not here, it's a joke.
May, may I please ask that you reduce the lights though? Now, starting tonight? The lights are on all the time, so.
We are on twenty-four seven.
So just over the door, just over the doorway, that's all we're asking, not fifty light.
So. So Chair, I'm, I'm just, there will be a site plan, um, that will be put in place, um, and will address any concerns.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it's, I just want to make a comment about the issue of the garden center, and it was suggested that the property might be a busy garden center if that was allowed as a. Or if the owners decided to run a garden center, but I think it's important to consider that, uh, that permitted use was way back in nineteen eighty-seven. Somebody did, uh, open a garden center there, but it was a very small garden center, it was locally oriented, rurally oriented, just like the official plan calls for. Um, there's no way that a busy garden center would ever be situated there, it's on Ford Road, it's way off the beaten path. Even, uh, T S C or P V Mark, uh, on the highway in the city, uh, is out of business, so it's just very unlikely that a garden center on Ford Road. Would ever that seven, seven vehicles. And if I can just ask a question about the site plan, is there a draft site plan already? And if so, have you provided to residents, uh, and also was a noise study considered in, uh, forming the, the site? Or in determining uh what kind of mitigation measures would be put in?
I can take that. Um so the site plan control bylaw delegates authority to staff, so council. Has no authority to approve a site plan agreement. This is the planning act. I know a lot of people might disagree with uh different timeframes or processes, but the planning act is our guiding document and it's what we have to comply with. So uh with respect to the site plan agreement, it will be staff preparing that document. No, it has not even been contemplated to be prepared yet. It wouldn't be done until after an amendment was approved and appeal period had passed and uh an application and payment. Were received by staff in order to move forward with that site plan agreement. And that agreement will take into consideration all of the comments and concerns that people have raised. Um and uh we'll be working with the applicant and their agent uh as well as my senior planning consultant to ensure that that document is. As fulsome as it can be to mitigate any negative impacts that have been brought forward as being a potential for this property. Um it will not be presented as a draft document for the public to review and provide comment on. It will be brought to council as a, a bylaw to be passed.
So at that time, again, are they able to ask questions of the, as the bylaw comes up and that as we did with this bylaw?
Um. We, we generally with, with, since the planning act changes where the authority's been delegated to staff, it's not brought as a. As a working document, it's brought as the final document.
Just to follow up on that question, it would, so would that be brought to the COW or being brought right to council?
It can, it can go to COW and then council, that's fine.
So that would be like, we're, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, because that was one of the issues that we had previous to this. Was, we went into the uh COW meeting and unfortunately there was a miscommunication and it didn't get as discussed as perhaps it should have now. So I just want to make sure that there is that opportunity to get that kind of input there. Is, does, is that how that works?
Site plan agreement doesn't take into consideration any input from council. It is staff led. Yeah, I don't have the ability to change that.
Okay, no, it's under the act. I understand if it's regulations, I understand it. I just was looking for a way that input, input can be.
But, but the act does give lights and.
Yes, the, the site plan agreement will address. Lighting, noise, parking, um refuse. What, whatever is relevant to be put in there will be put in there. Staff have been taking a lot of notes.
It's, it's nice if it comes to the COW first, just for, it's just so it's. It's not, I almost say slows in the process, but it like, it, it just gives that time for everybody to see it sometimes to before, like before it's finally approved to council too as well, but I mean.
Yeah, no, it just being new to council, it's. What process do we go through to get someone? I know it's, it takes ninety days and that, but it's. Where do they get their input and that kind of stuff? I just want to make sure that I understand so that when I, someone asks me that question, I can give them a proper answer.
So then, so the ninety days relates to the zoning amendment. It has nothing to do with the site plan agreement. So the decision of council has to be made within ninety days of a complete application, so that is. The approval of the bylaw or the passage of the bylaw. The site plan agreement is a separate process under the planning act. Um and again, a lot of comments have been raised. Those comments will be addressed in the site plan agreement. Council. Um unfortunately, um due to the, the change in the planning act, they, there is no authority to make any changes um other than what staff recommend. So the document will be very thoroughly reviewed and prepared.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So move the councillor Johnson and second by councillor Bass that bylaw four one three one dash twenty twenty five. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its regular meeting held on March eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Be read first, second and third time and pass sign and seal this eighteenth day of March, twenty twenty five. All in favor? Here it is. The move the councillor Crabtree and second by deputy Reed Carroll that council adjourn the regular meeting of council of March eighteenth, twenty twenty five. At seven thirty four P M until April first, twenty twenty five at six P M or at the call of the chair. All in favor? And that's here.
Good evening, welcome back to the committee hall in person, live stream electronically, Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty five, immediately following council agenda. Uh opening meeting, land acknowledgement. The council and staff at the township of Montague acknowledge the sacred land of which the township Montague is now located. This meeting is being held, is the ancestral and ancestral territory of the Algonquin and the Schnabia Nation. Adoption of agenda. Moved by councillor Johnson, second by councillor Bass. That the committee of the whole agenda dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty five be approved is amended uh this date. To add item three E administration building payment. All favor. Very. Disclosure of interest. Uh see none. Uh delegations and deputations, we've got none. Uh reported municipal officers, we've got A administration treasurer. Allison Varakim, Public Works, our complex update number five.
Thank you, Chair. Uh this evening council is seeing update number five, so I didn't bring anything to you in February, I was away on holidays. Um as you can see, the billing changes on a daily basis. Uh so since the last update. Uh we have signed the contract with Hydro um as discussed for the new service. This building will be changing over to a two hundred amp service. Um from a four hundred amp service and the new building will be the eight. Hundred amp service that's required for it. Uh that will still allow us to be a, a single service as opposed to going to the uh three. Which will be substantially less. Uh the steel structure is up, the exterior block walls are completed, they still have some interior block walls um for the second floor. The interior of the office area has the in-ground heating lines in and the concrete floor is poured. The interior walls, um I believe the steel studying is all done. Uh at this time now, um the steel on the walls is starting, so you're starting to see the charcoal gray. Um and those types of things. Paint colors and flooring have been chosen in principle. The rock removal for the cistern has been completed. There's a photo here of the actual cistern that's in place. Uh there's some photos of the interior of the um spaces as well of that center area. Um you're going to see some spray foam uh going on the exterior of the concrete wall, that center portion probably this week. Um and then the steel going up on that. Um you see in this uh kind of a rough diagram or a, a representation of the color combinations that have been chose, chosen with the charcoal gray. And the, it looks more like a light gray, but it's light um or just like a slight off white. So we're going to see that in that center section that pops out of it, that's the white, um the Montague M is going to be about six feet tall, so it's going to be very prominent on the building. With Montague underneath uh and Public Works on the one side and, and fire station on the other side. Um. So far, um as far as again, the collaboration is still going very well between ourselves, the engineering architect company uh and the contractor of our view. Um I have noted the change orders that have gone through with the rock removal again being. The substantial uh additional costs. Uh we're sitting. Thing currently with change work, like I said, substantial is a hundred sixty five thousand dollars. Um so with some of the other savings and changes that we made for savings, uh and there's still maybe a couple more savings. Um we're sitting at a difference of about a hundred sixteen thousand out of our contingency that we allowed uh one point three million for. Uh thank goodness the building came prior to tariffs uh because it would have been subject to the Canadian tariffs that were put on on March fourth, so we missed that, which is great. Um again, the budgetary uh control report is in front of council with about three point five million uh being spent to date. We have pulled some funds from our. Investments um and we've, um from our construction loan, we'll resubmit our, our investment money because we're getting a better return on our investment than what we're paying on interest through the construction loan. Um so we'll reinvest our money um and use the construction loan and we'll be continuing to pull some from that as well. And we'll continue to update council on what's going on. Our township responsibilities table, so it did include a potential twenty five percent tariff to be applied to the generator. It will not be applied, so that will come back out. That was just over eleven thousand dollars. Um we have been notified that it was not one of the items on the two hundred page list of um tariffs uh at this time. So it is anticipated that it's going to be delivered between the nineteenth and twenty fourth. So hopefully nothing changes in that time. Um and we'll be back down to our original price um of fifteen eight thousand. So that's a good news. Other than that, the um project is uh knock on wood slightly ahead of schedule. Um and is still on budget. Um obviously with some change, but we did allow for. So you can just see there's, we knew the rock removal was going to be there. Um overall, very pleased with how it's progressing, um where we're at financially and um. The whole process, we don't understand.
I've got a question, not want to spend money or anything else, but when you did, you see the hydro's coming in and that, yeah. Is there any need to have a gas line come in from the road now? And be put in, even though it may not be used for five years, because gas will be coming down the road, natural gas. Or are we going to, in five years, tear up the pavement and everything else that we, we do now? As far as putting a line in to, to the road. Is that, is that something that? Not trying to make more work, I'm just trying to think down the road, because so many times I've seen construction, probably generally been the same. They do something four or five years, you know, they.
He's talking about a gas line for future years.
For future years.
Yeah, I know, average, yeah.
Sometimes they do that just to, you put a couple thousand there now, but then you don't have to do it.
Or you're going to dig a transfer of hydro and that.
I don't know what the duration is.
Hydro's going on the backside of the building, it's not coming through the asphalt. Um so if council wants us to run a line, keep in mind that if it's a change order, it's on actually fifteen percent markup, so um.
I, I'm just, I was.
Direction of council on that one, because that's not what we had put in, um we have not.
So, but there's, there's no reason that they're getting a transfer.
It's on, so hydro is coming off that side of the building um because the um ground. Um. My brain is not working. Transformer will be out back by the generator. Um.
Well, I can ask another question. If natural gas comes down the road, would this building be changed to natural gas?
So if it comes down, it's going to be coming down that side to connect this building, this generator and then across the back where they're. So if it comes down, it's gonna be coming down that side to connect this building, this generator and then across the back where their. Is there an asphalt, um to tie it in, but if council wants to do it now, that's that's fine.
Uh I don't know, I don't know how soon it will come down, I've just heard that in the next five to ten years, the figure is gonna come in here. But I don't know. I mean, I don't know what it would cost.
So so uh I mean.
Know which, I wouldn't even know which direction to, which direction would be the best to run it and and then. Like like she says, because anything goes through the general contractor.
But is that something we could do?
Right, we we, it depends on when's the asphalt point. Should should I probably?
No, so um okay, so a couple things, so asphalt is slated for mid-May, mid to end of May. Um but we're substantially ahead of schedule, okay, just so everybody knows. Um so we can make that change, I just need direction of council to get that pricing, because we have not um accounted for it in here. Um. We're gonna have some more change orders though, because in the original plan, when we got the twelve or fourteen million dollar class fee estimate. We had cut um a number of things to try and reduce the price and some of the asphalt was some of that, so. Right now, we've asked for a change order to get pricing to come back council, because this old asphalt is supposed to stay out front of this admin building. It's gonna look terrible, it's not gonna tie, it's gonna be an issue, uh well, it'll tie, but it's still gonna be an issue, um. And it's deteriorating quicker than actually we thought it might, so. We are expecting you're gonna change order to complete the whole area and clean it all up. Um so we do still have some changes, but I mean, we can. By all means, if council wants us to run a gas line, um we can look into that.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay.
You should sit here.
Okay, okay, so we'll say we don't want to do that, if we can find a natural gas. If we ran the. A conduit underground while we're doing the wiring. If we were to run one from that building to just over here and have it even dead-ended for now.
Do we have a conduit already running?
For for gas?
Um no.
Well, I'm just saying maybe we could put, that would be expensive, put in big enough pipe that they could run the gas line through later.
I don't, I don't know for the service, that it depends on what the service requires, whether it needs to be hard piped or 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 whether you could run uh a a flex. Uh gas line like you're discussing.
It was just the thought, I just.
I just need direction from council, because I'll need to look into this like now.
Uh how much work is it to look into that, like is it, is it a quick, big call, I'm gonna say what would it cost to do this?
Well, it's not gonna be, because we need Enbridge to tell us what we're gonna need, so we're gonna have to put in a service order. They're gonna have to come out, they're gonna have to take a look, they're gonna have to tell us what we need, it's gonna have to go through their whole process. Um and then we'll have to get a change order request, get it approved, bring it to council.
So is there a cost for Enbridge to come and do that too as well, or is it?
No, but I'm assuming it will, if it's like hydro, it's gonna be several months before they get here. So if we hold up the contractor, that's gonna be a cost for us, so just keep that in mind, because they're ahead of time. And we're hoping that it continues to be ahead of schedule, so that we're not paying to keep a fire truck somewhere else.
So the odds of this actually coming into time to be.
I don't know.
We don't know, but if we went ahead with it, we could just not do it, and at the end of the day, it's a small.
I don't know how far the gas line has to be from an elec- from that size of electrical line coming into.
I I don't, it's all.
We only have so much.
It's all there, depending where Enbridge is gonna wind us in the building.
Yeah.
Because that's the other thing, like.
The big concern would be from that building over to this side, that could be dug beside that one at any time, it's just to have something, yeah, because if you spend. Uh thirty, forty thousand, put a pavement around the back.
You're gonna, you're gonna have a weird trench, it's it's just, it's one of those things that you're always going to see.
But you always, you always see those trenches, they were because of what we were just talking about, it's where it's gonna be, it's gonna be this, that. And three months later, then we find out, oh, they're actually not, you come all the way down, you know.
Well, that that's it, because we we don't know what their actual timeframe is.
But then progression.
I I I I personally, like, because we have no idea what time frame is, I would. As much as aesthetically would be beneficial to know, but because we have no date that's concrete in. Uh I I would say we gotta be like where it goes.
We can ask them.
You you can ask, but I I'm, if it's gonna hold up the contractor, we can't do it.
Well, no, we, I wouldn't say that, but it's a chance of asking, just for this part. Because we do this separate, we wouldn't go through the building or anything, just to get the gas order.
If if Enbridge is available, you know, I I that's our gas, but I just don't know, it's gonna depend, as long as it doesn't hold up the contractor.
What's title, sir? Did they give you a date?
Pedro hasn't given us a date, we're hoping may. We're hoping may.
You still have time to contact them, you see.
I mean, does it not, does it hurt to to ask?
Asking, asking never hurts, like you said, there's no cost.
There's no, no cost, it's like, it doesn't put it at a tremendous amount of extra work on to something that doesn't need to be. Uh I mean.
Because I guess what we're asking is, if they were coming down, where would they come across and where would they wanna have that in the building? That's essential, the questions we're asking.
And make sure that they don't have to do the service.
The the, yeah, they they don't have to, because yes, she she's right on that too, because whenever, whenever a service is run, it usually. Whoever's the signing authority on the service has to service and capful ten.
Certainly.
Because they're liable for any leaks that could potentially happen. So like when you have it connected in your house, you have to have that, that little tag where they sign off on it, the pipe would be no different. So and it sits there for five years, where they don't know how it is, I mean.
Questions to this, instead of coming down here, even if they do for gas down the road. For this building, why don't we just see if we're gonna bring a pipe from there into the new building, once you get inside the building. And you have the gas, they're gonna run a line at any time inside it, and that'd be a lot shorter.
It goes back to the same thing, it's, you're you're at, they have to still run it.
How's it get to here then? You can still run it over here, it's two different buildings.
They may not allow two different services though, because.
Do you know how what, how big a service do they have to put in for gas to come to here and then go over there, whereas you get two of them coming in, it'd be a lot of rush.
I think, I think it's gonna put up a lot more red flags, but I think it's really worth.
You're gonna ask the questions though, so I think we.
Just a call, then if not, then don't worry about it, you know.
And you guys want it coming back to you for costing, if you're able to get it to us before we approve any change orders, or you're gonna approve us to approve up to so much? That was not included in.
I I think we should.
So we just need direction.
I I think we should have it come back to us then.
She didn't even know to.
To.
No.
Just gotta can't do that.
Be in a camera, be in a long camera meeting, so um. Okay, we may need to call a special meeting, just keep that in mind, that if a decision needs to be made to not hold anybody up. Um but we'll ask the questions and we'll see, just that's not included in the township responsibility, so that will be an extra, just. Just for everybody's.
But we can do it as a council, we don't have to pay those few guys for that.
Um you can, but right now it's their construction site.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So we can't go onto their construction site, so we would have to do it. On the dashboard, so. If it's all through them, so it's gonna have to be a change order, because it's their, they're responsible for that.
Anything within the fence, the fences there.
Actually ridiculous, you know.
That's how it works though, for health and safety, that's how it works.
It's costing fifty percent on top, yeah, because that's their profit.
Like I really dig up my asphalt property.
But I mean, we can see what the pricing is, we can see what it comes in, and it doesn't hurt, maybe the fifty percent, like maybe it's a good price and it's not.
It's good thing in like five years from now, could be fifty percent more anyways. Oh, exactly, like, so like, we, it's like, so, yeah, we we pay a little bit more than fifty percent, but.
And we're not paying to put asphalt down to to fill up the pool, so that fifteen percent is already paid out, right, so so I, I'm just.
No, it's a, it's a ready service.
I think we should ask the question.
Yeah.
Good point, Jim, we'll ask the question, we'll see if we're able to, if we're not, we'll move forward.
Alright.
Makes sense?
Yeah, we we had a road a few years ago that we didn't realize there was like a culprit, it needs to be put put stuff underneath it in the lifespan of that road, and we would have liked to have that sort of question. As it was going through the process, I'd say, yeah, it's a great question.
I think it's a great point.
Yeah, yeah.
And I will see what we can uh. What we can get at here, so the intent is um with this is to, once the uh exterior steel is up, to get um. Arrange a time for council to walk through. Um.
Love the tour.
Just keep that in mind, that um your heart has time, that's important. Um so we are going to arrange that, we're just trying to. Allow them to get the steel up and and not be in their way and and stop anything, um but that is in the plans, okay, to get council to walk through. Anything else that, that's a great point on the gas thing, so any anything else that? Council.
I think they did, it's going ahead of schedule, you guys, like everybody did a great job, they keep it going, it's uh, it looks great. Just just keep doing what you're doing, this is, this is fantastic.
Uh sorry, uh moved by Deputy Reed Carroll, second by Reed Jennings, the council accepts public board. And fire complex update number five is reported as information. All favor.
Sorry, just on that, is there anything that we're missing as far as in the update that you guys are looking to see, or? Are you getting kind of everything you're looking for?
I think it's pretty comprehensive, yeah.
Okay, just making sure that there's nothing that we're missing that you guys wanna see. Okay, sorry.
Uh I am B Administrator Treasurer, Allison Verakin, uh vacancy junior planner position.
Thank you Chair, so um as council is aware, the effective April first, um Kirsten is taking the municipal manager clerk position. And I am moving to treasurer deputy clerk, um which means the junior planner position uh is technically vacant. Uh with that, there's several options um for us to consider, which we're recommending at this time that we go ahead and try all three. Um so that we discuss options with neighboring municipalities, both the opportunity to share a a higher R P P planner. Um post for a junior planner, see what we get, uh maybe there's a great fit uh that will work for us. Um and that council realized that one person transitioned, that we may have some additional hours for the consulting planner. Um especially with a subdivision in the works and things like that, that she may not have time to necessarily address or. Or put, put the time towards like she does now, um with taking on the municipal manager role. So the intent is that the junior planner position, we're gonna post it um immediately if if. Uh council is good with this, and we'll also be reaching out to neighboring municipalities immediately to kind of start that discussion, see if there's even any interest. Um or ability uh to share a person. We think that some of our neighboring municipalities are pretty small and um. But we might be able to to share or work on something there, uh we may also be able to offer. The appropriate wage for an R P P planner between the two of us, uh cost sharing. Um but like I said, there may also be, it's kind of perfect timing that that. Students are starting to, they're gonna be graduating in April, um we may get somebody, a junior planner that may be new to the role, um but may fit us. Uh they can work with our current consulting planner, um and grow into a position as well.
Sure. So when you talk about uh neighboring municipalities, happy within Larnar County, or can you go across the river?
We're gonna reach out to all of Montague. It's okay. No boundaries here.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure we weren't limited to the.
Nope, we're not.
I I I, yeah, I think it's great, I think, once again, like we did in the last process, I think, making sure that we're as, we're looking as as many different options of this junior planner, because I mean, we 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 are definitely need to fill it another vacant position to make sure that we are. Our staffer have everything we need, so we're not uh oververting anybody else. And making sure that we have our backups also and plans uh too as well, so I think that's. All important, and I think this is gonna be a conversation that's been gonna go for a little while to make sure, but I I I agree, I think we have. Uh spread the net out, see what's out there to make sure that we have the complement that can back up, end up planning, maybe you have your treasure role and and that kind of stuff too as well, so I think there's a. I think compliment for that, so I look forward to looking how we can. Put that net out there and 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 find the people that we need to make sure that we have the balanced workload that's out there, so. Now who wants to be there?
I'm sorry Chair, yeah, so the other thing is that we would ask for one council member to be on the hiring committee um for the planning position, no matter what that looks like. Um and also if we can get an alternate, just in case we need it.
And now maybe Reed Jennings to be there, and she's retired, she's got.
Yes, that's what.
She has a council trip, so she has nothing planned, so I'd say, so she has, she's good.
If you need an alternative, you know, to help out.
We start on drug.
All favor.
We might not eat yet, but just in case.
Now she's free, because she's canceled everything we got.
Yeah.
Right?
And so.
And then we'll bring something back, obviously.
Okay. Before I read it. I counsel Bass, second by councillor Johnson. Uh the council directs staff to reach out to the neighboring municipalities for potential shared planner staff opportunities, posting the junior planner. Position and additional required hours for the hired planning consultant. And the council approved Reed Jennings as the council member on the hiring committee for the prime position, and the councillor approved councillor Johnson as the alternate councillor. On the hiring committee for the prime position, and further, the council directs staff to bring back report, update council as needed. All favor. It's hard for me not to raise my hand. Uh Administrator Treasurer, Austin Verakin, uh public sector salary disclosure, reporting twenty twenty four.
Thank you Chair, on an annual basis, uh we have to report to the Public Sector Salary Disclosure Act nineteen ninety-six. Uh for any employees who make over a hundred thousand dollars uh in the previous calendar year. Um we had one employee, uh with myself, uh this is a very transparent report to the public, last year we had a a couple of individuals who questioned um the wages. Uh for doing several jobs, so I thought I'd get ahead of that questioning and go ahead and just bring a report and break it out for everybody. So um you will note that it was over a hundred sixty-two thousand dollars, uh that was based on being the clerk administrator full-time, the treasurer full-time. And the public works manager full-time for over five months, um and which resulted in. Very limited vacation time being able to be taken, um so there was a payout of vacation pay as well. Um note, I wanna make it very clear to the public and to council that. Um the volunteer time for all the M R C C stuff, all of the senior stuff, Winter Fest, mining machines, organizing, doing all of those things. Um even a lot of my job, to be honest, um was not part of that wage, that was volunteering to this community and volunteering um to put in time, because. I think it's important um when you are in that role, um to give back to the community where you work. So I just wanna make that very clear, um because people do see me out at a lot of stuff and that they realize I'm not being paid, that's volunteer time uh for that. And I will continue to volunteer my time as I transition to just the treasurer deputy clerk role. Um so you're still going to see me out, you're still going to see that, um and it still is volunteer time. So I wanna make that very clear, um I'm excited uh to also note that my wages will be nothing even close reflective to this uh for twenty twenty-five year. Because we have made changes, um and I have been, uh as of April first, I will be moving down to just the treasurer deputy clerk role. Um and using vacation time. So um I wanted again to be very transparent, very open of in relation to this, because the number is going to be transparent. Um and it also gives council the tool to show if those were full-time positions that were filled, uh what that actual cost would have been to the rate pairs. Um and then moving forward, I think I'm excited and I think Kirsten is excited for her um change in position as well, and we look forward to the twenty twenty-five year.
Alright.
Um I think you earned every penny of what you got and more, also when I look at this data, we saved sixty-eight thousand bucks off the top. Um the amount of work you put in at the price point, we'll say, that uh we are paying you at, was an excellent deal. We got excellent uh work out of you, which was even better, but you also sacrificed a lot to do that for us, and I greatly appreciate that. So we got all that done, I think it was more than a fair wage that you were paid, you probably could have gotten a lot more, but. We did save a lot of money as uh township, so thank you very much, I appreciate all of your hard work and your vol. Tearing, because that's awesome, too, but when I look at all of this kind of stuff, we got an awesome spoken deal.
So I just wanna say, too, that, um. I think as council, I mean, we appreciate everything that you did, uh, I personally apologize for the burnout that we've caused, because we did have a lot, I mean, that was a lot to put on you, um, and, uh. Moving forward, now that we've got these positions, and we'll have more positions in place, this would be great. Uh, we're doing very well to have some staff in the salary ranges that we post for a small municipality. We will never compete against the, the large size, but, I mean, so what we actually paid out last year is still minor, if we'd have had to try and find somebody else to come in and cover by any consultant wages, so. The township was very fortunate to have the expertise that we had, so, but I'm very excited as a rest of council for, for moving forward.
Seconding, seconding and repeating what, uh, the others were saying, uh, Ali did an amazing job, uh, making sure that we were covered. Uh, we not only got a wonderful volume for what we paid out, but the grants and everything else, uh, we could not ask for uh, a better person, uh, we, we appreciate everything she did, and, uh, everything she continues to do, and as far as the what she does in her volunteer time, I, I can speak to it, I see her way too much, her husband sees her very little, and, and, uh, to both, uh, her and her very understanding husband, thank you very much, our, in the Dallas community.
Uh, can I clarify to the word burnout, should have said work-life balance.
Appreciate, appreciate all your comments, again. I'm gonna go back to the whole team thing. The team in Montague is amazing, and the reason why it wasn't burnout.
No, but work-life balance.
Um, like life balance, um, and why it was still enjoyable is because of all of the people that I work with here, and they also stepped up, and they also, um, did a lot for this community, so it's kudos to everybody, um, and again, we look forward to twenty twenty-five with some of the changes and, and moving forward.
Just to chime in to as well, I, I agree with all those comments, I mean, like, a hundred percent, I mean, and we have a great team, and Ali really shows that, the leadership shows that. I think the value is a hundred percent, and I'm, one thing about, excited about keeping us afloat along with the amazing people that we have, uh, that surround us too as well, is going forward that Ali's gonna have that work-life balance too as well, and we have to spend more time with her husband instead of Gerald. And, and I think that's, I think that's, that's a, that's a big thing with that, with that work, and we're gonna, we're excited to see Ali have, uh, with the, the stuff that we do, and the events that we do, and everything else, it's just, it's, it's, it's wonderful to have her here, and, and that, and that she's staying on, uh, especially in the, in the numbers game, because that is so pivotal going forward, if you have an A-one treasurer and someone that's in that role, that is going to make a, uh, and I think, echo yours, we will have values as we go forward, and we're gonna get the values, too, because of the rest of the amazing staff that we have too as well, because they all see the work ethic that everybody puts in together, and it really makes a big, big difference, and I think it's, it's just, uh. It's just motivating to see, as a, especially sitting on council, it's just motivating to see that, that, uh, that engagement that we have, uh, it's second to none to anybody, so, thank you, Dole.
Yes, I'm the one that hasn't spoken yet, so, Ali knows exactly how I feel, but anyway, I've been with her for a lot of the volunteer stuff and that, and she, uh. Works all the time very hard, the only thing I noticed is with the seniors, if, if one particular person, if she could just be a little nicer to them. Very much appreciated, the rest of the seniors, she does an excellent job.
On that, no. Uh, way to go, team monitor. Uh, moved by Reed Jennings, seconded by Deputy Carol, the council accepts public sector salary disclosure, reporting twenty twenty-four, report as information. All fair.
I think, I, I do just one comment, like, any, any comments from the public about this? I think if you listen to this right now, the utmost support from council, you know, if there's anybody, the utmost support is right from council about that.
Exactly.
That's, that's the most biggest thing, so, sorry, I.
No, I have, that's wonderful point, and.
Well, sure.
Um, next, uh, clerk, junior planner, Kristen Crote, planning department update. Do it fair.
Okay. Um, okay, so, uh, department heads bring quarterly reports to council, uh, to give information on activity, but sometimes things come up, uh, during the year outside of that timeframe, uh, so this report speaks to three projects that are currently in process, uh, within uh, Leonard County and, um, Montague Township. Uh, so the first is the Aggregate Resources Master Plan, which was referenced in the, uh, correspondence on the council agenda. So just to kind of give you a little bit of information on it, um, wh- while licensed pits and quarries are identified in county and municipal official plan mapping, the twenty twenty-four. Or, uh, PPS, or the provincial planning statement, also requires that aggregate resources be identified, mapped, and protected. And so this means, obviously, that municipalities need to map these resources and to, um, ensure that they have official plan policies in place that outlines the activities that are permitted on these resource lands and the lands that are adjacent to them. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, Montague updated their official plan, uh, which identifies licensed pits and quarries in Schedule A, and, uh, resources of potential bedrock in Schedule, it should be Schedule B, um, Schedule B. Uh, so based on the township's official plan policies, uh, for any applicant that's submitting a planning application, so that can include, uh, severance subdivisions, zoning amendments, minor variances, site plans. Um, if that development is proposed within a specified distance of a pit or quarry or bedrock resource, uh, that distance of, um. Um, of scope of review can vary anywhere between a hundred and fifty meters to five hundred meters. An aggregate impact assessment would be required to demonstrate that that proposed use would not be negatively impacted by an existing operation, or prevent a viable operation if it were proposed in future. Uh, so the, I'm just gonna refer to the, uh, the Aggregate Resources Master Plan as the ARMP, we're just gonna abbreviate that. So the ARMP provides mapping options that include sand and gravel resources of a primary and secondary significance, and, uh, specific bedrock resource areas. Um, and excluding areas where extraction would not be feasible is an option, uh, for example, that would be areas where, uh, there's intensified development, settlement areas, provincially significant wetlands, or, uh, significant distance from a haul route. Uh, there is optional implementation of a precluded hinder test, uh, noted, that would essentially screen out certain planning files from requiring aggregate impact assessments. The county is hosting an open house, uh, at the county of Leonard, in their council chambers on March the twentieth, that's this Thursday, from six until eight PM, six PM till eight PM, uh, and the county is seeking feedback from the public, uh, and they've requested that feedback be submitted, um, by March the thirty-first. Um, the growth management strategy, uh, this is being coordinated by the county, and the purpose is to provide growth projections and policy recommendations that would be used by the county and lower-tier municipalities. Um, there has been, uh, some comments raised that perhaps the, the population data might not be correct, so staff will be reaching out to the county, uh, just to confirm the numbers that are, are in that report, um. Uh, the public is encouraged to read this document, and the county is requesting feedback by March the thirty-first. The third item in this report, uh, references, uh, a plan of subdivision that is being proposed in Montague, um, at the corner of Matheson and Rosedale Road South. So this proposed, uh, plan of subdivision includes forty-one residential building lots, um, and circulation has begun, uh, pursuant to Planning Act regulations. Um, several documents have been submitted by the applicant, applicant to date. These documents are posted on the county's website, and the township, um, also posted it on ours to save people from having to visit another website and click a bunch of links, uh. Some of these documents are very technical in nature and will be peer reviewed, uh, all, um. All reports and studies and peer reviews are, of course, at the expense of the applicant. Uh, keep in mind that the county of Leonard is the approval authority for plans of subdivision, similar to severance applications, so while the subdivision would be located within our municipality, the county of Leonard is the ultimate approval authority. Um, changes to the Planning Act in twenty twenty-two, remove the requirement for public meetings for plans of subdivision.